Go for the autobahn.
What do you got?
I was up there Saturday and I can't see that. I just have one. I just spent some time from what is. Well, you know, to me. How's Billy? Say to you, sir. What do you mean, little man?
Yeah, we're looking at it. Uh, I don't know.
Yeah, I think he's doing a good job. I don't know. I think he's playing with the big grass and being low. Trees and being trees. They've been. They can, I'm sure. I didn't.
Nobody will have the best one he's done out there. I could ask him. I guess you won't come today, so there you have it. Wait on. I'll be back.
I'm Ronnie's daughter. I did see that.
He's trying to be mine. And Kelly told me to do something. I won't sit there if you got mad.
Ideally, we were like. We're so young.
Now's the time to go. Does the weather get rash to finish that fence out of Fort Belknap?
It's pretty clever.
I'm glad.
Go ahead and haul all that. Man, let's shut up like two.
Ready to go out there? Are the judges not as well apart? Boy, you don't wear good trousers. It's quite an argument. If my name goes home, be a Dahmer.
That's why I.
Got a little C B. Thanks for your help.
Thanks.
Call made to order. Young County Commissioners Court setting an irregular meeting Monday, October 24th, 2016. It is about nine thirty-four A.M. I make note that this meeting was posted in the manner for the time required, that all members of the court are present. We are not fly out of spring, but we are on camera. If it be convenient, please stand. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have here and for all the many blessings that we have, for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. We ask your blessings upon this meeting, the things that we do and the business that we transpire are within the benefit of our citizens and in accordance with thy will. We're grateful for this nation and we pray for its prosperity and its turn back to you. And in the upcoming elections, we pray that, and we know that your will will prevail. We ask that you protect those that are serving in harm's way, to protect the rights and privileges that we've come to know and that we've come to love so much. Ask your blessings upon each one here today. We ask your forgiveness as we know you will give. Christ's name we pray. Hang out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item number three. Public comments, announcements, and presentations. Have in your packet a notice of Red River Valley Association and Red River Authority, Texas Twenty-Second Annual Regional Water Conference, to be held Wednesday, November the sixteenth, 2016, at Red River Authority, at Texas headquarters building, 3,000 Hammond Road, Leesdale Falls. That is in your package. Also in your packet is a notice of eligibility for low interest emergency disaster loans that's going to be administered by the Texas Department of Public Safety through our local FSA office here. Eligibility is there. I think that is due to us being a joining county to those that were declared in this activity. Also in your packet is a letter and request from Dr. Harold Whately, B X D, in regard to assistance's community crust concept. I expected Mr. Whately to be here this morning, but he's not. Advised him what the public announcements, comments, and presentation were in regard to. I did expect him here.
I noticed he made a request in November eighth at the speaking time. Of course, under this, part of this agenda, I guess any citizens welcome anytime.
Yes, they are, but he was advised.
Yeah, your leverage had up the parameters, which he needed to buy about.
He made a call after he made his show up.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything to bring to the table here, announcements or anything? Fort Belknap days were very good. I didn't get to go Friday, but I understood there were pretty good attendance of seventh graders. Several hundred, I think.
I think four hundred was the number that you handed in.
They had a, on Saturday, all invited, historic Fort Belknap Days, period dress. I might add that on Friday night, they had what was regarded as an offshoots hall. They had a little dance that I really didn't make, but the time wouldn't allow me to do that. But they said it was a big success. All the made funds to accomplish that. Be anything else? Yes. People in our audience here, do you, are you here to make any statement or?
Available.
Announcement?
Yes, sir.
You are?
Yes, public.
This would be the time to do the thing unless we have an agenda item that you request.
No, no.
Come up and state your name. State your name for the record, if you would, please.
My name's Carlos Valencia. Live at 522 Race Track Road here in Graham, Texas. My father has purchased the property beginning of the year. We've done some improvements. We cleaned up the place. We've applied for, we're trying to reopen the steakhouse. We've, we have started renting the RV park. I have called a few times to our commissioner and asked him, you know, who's, who's going to be maintaining from Rossa Ranch Road all the way down to where the county signs is maintenance ends. Since we've lived there, I think I've been taking care of that. I haven't seen nobody do anything on that road. You can only get one vehicle up and down the road with all the overgrow of the road. The trees are bung out to the middle of the road as you can, if you take, go down there. I'm the one that's cut the trees. So my, my campers that do go down there and stay can get their hundred thousand dollar RV. They don't want to pull down there because there's trees that you can barely pull a vehicle in. And I called and I've asked if, you know, who maintains that? And the response I got was there was no plans to do anything there yet. Well, you know, as gradually we're almost ready to open the restaurant and I don't see nothing, not no county equipment, nothing going down that road. I asked to see how far back easements are going to be on a county road or what's the requirement of a county road? Cause I got people's fence up to the road. There's no easement on either side of the road.
I don't find there would be up there.
Well, one side is pulled back far enough, but one on the, on the south side of the road, fence is up to, up to the edge of the blacktop. I'm pretty sure that there has to be, there's water right, but water, Fort Belknap's waters are sitting in that yard. Seems like the fence has been pulled out, whoever owns that property there. And what I wanted to know is what is, what is the requirement for a county road? And who maintains it? You can't even see the, the street sign there on the road. It's over, it's overgrown that bad.
What I understand is you're, you're the owner?
No, no, my father is.
And your father is?
Juan Corpus.
Juan? He has been in here singing with regard to some permits and things.
So, I mean, I, I.
Let me address that a little bit.
We've put it, we've put on our road from where county road stops.
Okay. Let me address that. That's in precinct one. That's in my precinct.
Okay.
The discussion started on this road with Mr. John Boone. Are you gentlemen familiar with John Boone?
No, sir.
He was going to tell me that someone from Kansas was buying the place and was interested in putting a horse training facility, a restaurant, an RV park, those kind of things that ended that road, and he wanted that road rebuilt. Well, you know, getting in line, there's a lot of folks in this county wants a lot of roads rebuilt. We've got very limited funds to do that with. At the time, we couldn't rebuild, spend that kind of money on a road, first off, that ended well before that facility begins. And to build that road for, for something that was not yet a viable entity. I told Mr. Boone at the time, and I think I've even told you that, but should that become an economic viability for this county, we will take a look at doing more to improve that road. Right now, basically that road is just ingress and degress for whatever's going on down the end of that road, and it doesn't service a lot of people. And we've got to look at the number of people that we spend our money on while we're pressing those roads. We can take care of cleaning that, those trees off of that sign. We've got a lot of that kind of work to do around the county right now. We're trying right now to remove roads where roads are well traveled. And that's the ones that get the, get the work first. I know you called me the other day, you were going to come by and see me.
Yeah, we just haven't, yeah, we just haven't had time. And we did go, but the offices closed.
Your time and my time are both in short supply.
Yeah.
Okay? If you should want to discuss this matter with me and have solutions formulated, I would suggest you find some time to come and see me. We'll sit down and talk about it.
And that, that's kind of why we're here, so we can bring this abroad and find out what, what direction we do need to go. Because, I mean, for a county road, county should at least maintain and cut the.
Every person in this county says that about the road in front of their house.
Yes, sir.
They sure do.
Okay. For your information, there's very few roads in the county that have actually, that the county has actually has a deep form. Almost all of them are about restrictive easement. That just means that that's where the traffic began to go and the county began to maintain them to the degree that they became county road. In 2007, I believe it was, we adopted a county road map whereby we declare a public interest in the roads that we now maintain. Some of those roads got turned back. I don't recall about this one. Is it still?
Still a road.
Still a public road? But does it have a class on it? Has it been classified?
No, it doesn't have a classification.
We have class one, class two, and class three roads.
Those bits have been there the last thirty-five years, as far as I'm, I know. So is I doing it down there.
I understand that you. Juan Corpus. That's your name?
Yes.
Okay. You're the owner of the property?
Right.
And you're Carlos Valencia?
Yes, sir. That is my son.
Okay. And what, you're just requesting some services?
Yeah, just to look, come and look at it. And I've been maintaining it myself, you know, with, with our own equipment. From the road where the maintenance sign, where the maintain, the maintenance sign is, we've, we've built up that road and we've trucked in ten, twelve trucks of rock and we've built from there on down to the restaurant, that road. But you can't even, you, the road that goes up to Rossa Ranch is, needs a little bit of work.
The Rossa Ranch Road?
No, no, Race Track.
Race Track Road. Well, Rossa Ranch Road needs a lot too. Got to remember, if I have to come down the Race Track Road and rebuild that road without rebuilding Rossa Ranch first, we're going to have some distension along this piece of thoroughfare.
I think, I think the Race Track just needed some ground or something in there. So it's got to be.
That was the plan I discussed with Mr. Boone. That, that thing had some, had some wrap put on it and it's gotten extremely rough. Just kept keep the dust down. But it's very narrow. We're using the easement that was already there.
Right away, I think.
Right away, there's not going to be easement. Yeah, talking about the water lines, of course, the water lines can be on either side of the fence.
We can go and cut the trees into that and let us do it.
Right.
But they're got, it's got like three or four holes. We've got to go around them.
Well, we've used up our five minutes here. If you guys will just give me a call, I will, I will be happy to meet you out there. Rather than you come see me, you can't seem to find time to come see me, I'll come see you. I'll try to find some time out of my schedule and we'll, we'll discuss this further.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Okay. Might there be anything else? Nothing else, then we'll go to aisle four. Consider county clerk minutes from previous meeting, October seventeenth, twenty sixteen. Be there any amendments, additions, deletions, or corrections? You got that second? We have a motion by Commissioner Wiley, Second Commissioner Rogers to accept those minutes as presented, all in favor?
Yes.
Carried five over. Item number five, Consider Treasury Financial Report.
These are August. Of course, we can't balance or present in September until we clear out, finish the year. So we're just sort of looming along and until we start getting our tax money in, but early in balance for August.
Statement's been sent out? Tax statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So they'll start coming in, but we did have to move a little more money in September to the treasurer's to keep us rolling. The, the bank is fine, it's just our bookkeeping within the county that's, you know, this is the hard time of the year, but we're okay. But we're all balanced for August.
Okay. You're, you're not actually presenting this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. On the basis of public lists. You want to have a much empty balance. In the general, we had one hundred eighty thousand, three hundred eighty-four sixteen. The overall balance is five million, five hundred forty-four thousand. So it's just a, a cash flow deal right now. We'll just have to keep moving around. But these are only August and we are paying in October right now. So we're still paying out of September, still paying out of October.
We have a motion to. To move, set the financial report to settle. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, Second Commissioner Sykes, all in favor?
Uh, carried.
Item number six, Consider Auditor's Budget Amendments and Vouchers Payable.
I don't have any budget amendments this morning.
No amendments, that's a good time.
I have vouchers total of forty-three thousand, two twenty oh six, and all of this is fiscal year seventeen. We did do a run the other day. We didn't get to sixteen, the little bills paid.
Yes, so.
Very few things.
So what's your voucher? When do you maybe expect to?
Finish up to sixteen. We're getting close. I do want to go ahead. Kenneth is supposed to have our audit on the first meeting in November. I told him I need to go ahead and get a bill on that so we can get that paid out of sixteen. And there's very few more things that I expect to be paid in sixteen. Trying to shut that down as fast as.
The total bill in the courthouse.
Hadn't paid that yet. That's going to be in sixteen yet. I don't, do I have it yet?
I don't think so. No, we've got them, you know, we used to have the proposal.
Yeah, so I don't know. They were here along.
Yeah, it's going to be more than the proposal. Well.
We're going to be able to get it to sixteen?
I hope, I hope. Plus, well, my hope is not more than the proposal. I mean, we, yeah, it's going to be more because we had some work done prior.
We expanded the scope of the project.
Yeah.
Of course, we don't have the interior stuff done yet.
Interior, huh? Lady, I don't know, Monty, yeah, Monty did. We, I met Monty up here like last week, looked over and he was, was going to send me two different options. I just, I haven't received that yet.
We'll get the plumbing and touching care out of sixteen.
Not your, to Monty, construction around here. Not your one. Monty Johnson.
We're talking about Monty Johnson. Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Wiley. He's got a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wiley and Second Commissioner Sykes to approve the vouchers payable as presented, all in favor? Carried. Item number seven, Senator Floyd Bond Rider, this is only a change in description, the change is Heath Anderson's description from probation officer to chief juvenile probation officer. Have a motion by Commissioner, Second Commissioner Rogers to approve the change in description and rider on Floyd Bond being the chief juvenile probation officer. Heath Anderson, all in favor? Carried five over. Okay, let's. Five minutes give us enough time to discuss this, consider it?
Should.
Item number eight, discuss, consider appointment to inspire attorney, Young County Sheriff. We set last weekend this. We closed the item, had some discussion with this, took it away afterwards. However, I believe that the consensus was that we would, we had selected an appointee. What's the court's pleasure here? Do, do we want to make that publicly known and reserve the official appointment on the thirty-first, or do we want to officially appoint? The oath can't be given or taken until the office is officially vacant, which is the thirty-first of this month.
Personally, I think that we should go ahead and make the appointment effective on the thirty-first, go ahead and make the appointment public, so that we can put any lids on any, any speculation as to why and wherefore we haven't made the appointment, knowing that there's a vacancy in the field.
So if the sheriff's nice date is the thirty-first, do we have to wait until November first to actually appoint?
No, we, we'll make it. The effective date is the thirty-first. I don't think it was specifically given a time. I just think probably twelve, twelve o'clock A.M., thirty-first is the official date.
I think the law gives us latitude, I think, to go ahead and fill the vacancy with, with an appointee.
Then let me have an official motion and a second for the appointment of a specific individual to be effective on the thirty-first day of October.
I wouldn't permit that motion.
And who's got a second? Ma'am? And that person being? Mr. Krabs, back to Congress.
Finish the, the old term.
About Timmy working on an order, an official order, an appointment to put in that. If you work that up.
I'll work that out.
Okay. Well, we're going. I mean, there's a few little adjustments, but it's a kind of official written order that we'll all sign. We'll all sign and we get that completed. And we'll give you a copy of that too.
I think it's important to note here that we are appointing Travis Backcock to finish the,
That is.
Un, unfulfilled term of Sheriff Walls.
That is.
And that this has nothing to do with the sheriff being elected and sworn in on January one.
Yeah, that is to fill the unexpired term of Sheriff Walls, which will end on, at midnight, twelve thirty-one, twenty sixteen. Which I guess is the same time that seventeen starts.
So I guess actually the county does the best sheriff secretary out there?
Okay, that might be so. Mr. Sheriff, a little bit with regard to this. It'll be three weeks from today before we have another meeting if we don't post an official meeting on thirty-first. But that is, that's the pleasure of the courts to post that official meeting. We can also have vouchers payable or whatever, not transpired.
You can just work and we'll, we'll talk about it on the show either.
Okay, we, yeah, we're still discussing.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sykes and a second by Commissioner Pruitt to appoint Travis Backcock as the sheriff of Young County and to make that appointment be effective on October the thirty-first, twenty sixteen. And that appointment is to fulfill the unexpired term of Sheriff Ryan Walls, which will end December the thirty-first, twenty sixteen.
Not December. His, his, his term. Not Wall's term. Be Wall's term being, being.
Wall's, yeah, expired term.
An expired term.
That's an unexpired term.
Like I'm, didn't I?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
He's going to, we'll have an unexpired term, which, turn will end on that, on the twelfth, on twelve thirty-one, sixteen at midnight. Okay. And we'll, we'll have a formal written order enclosed in the present exhibit minutes.
We'll all sign.
All in favor? I believe that's carried very unanimously.
Congratulations. Having a meeting on thirty-third, we're going to complete the.
Not thirty? We're thirty for S. I, I think. Let's make thirty, like thirty.
We thought that was make thirty. Commissioner Wall did. He did.
Excuse me?
Commissioner Wiley said he's thirty the other day.
I think, you know, any earlier would be all right, but like thirty, that's kind of an open.
I'm sure it's seven. We did it seven.
Get that on at that time. Okay, it's ten o'clock. We're ready for him. Item number ten. That is open bid for Smooth Drum Vibratory Soil Compressor requested by precinct four.
I, I received one bid and that was from Warren Cat. And the bid, the price is seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Even money?
Even money.
This a new one?
Two thousand.
Twelve?
Two thousand twelve.
What size of ground? How big is it?
He's got an eighty inch.
Eighty? Single ground?
Single ground. It's a C five-two, five-four H.
C five-two, five-four H?
Eight.
Eight.
Pad foot.
Got pad foot. Okay.
I think that'd be good on rock. Everything is a smooth drum.
You accept that again?
I'll accept that, yeah.
Can I borrow it tomorrow?
I don't have it. If there's ever a time to buy some kind of equipment, I'll try to buy.
Yeah, the twenty hours are in there.
Something new like that right there cost about.
One eighty?
Close to it. That is cab there.
Really? We're sure we're getting Monty to all work out again.
I'm looking at both of them, isn't it?
He's small.
He getting more work out of him quicker.
Yeah.
That's right.
Now that, that has a heck on their lungs.
Little boy from.
Yeah, they go and eat salad and gluten free, you know that?
Little boy that was a sweeper that swept from that asphalt company.
Yeah, it's TM.
Well, he had, that one guy, he had a bandana. That was his breed of apparatus. And then another guy who was cutting them in, he had his little breed of face mask.
He had respirator?
Respirator and everything.
Yeah. He was a George Foster regulation.
Yeah.
Were they open? Was open equipment?
Open equipment.
The other guy looked like he was riding a drag on a cattle herd.
You couldn't see him if you tried.
This gun extended warranty for a year, five, five hundred hour. How many hours does this thing have on it?
Uh, what did it say over there?
Well, it's looking. Just the extended warranty is for a year, five hundred hour, hour, right? And I, I expect to make five hundred additional hours.
Outside, literally.
But I don't, I don't, that's like, how many hours this got on it in business?
So if I got a pad foot?
Do you agree? Yeah. Pad foot has to be followed up behind with a smooth drum to.
I said, if I get a pad foot.
Here's the thing, here's, here's the thing though. You can take it, take that smooth drum off and put the pad foot on.
You can get a kid to put a pad foot on it.
Yeah.
So I'll buy the pad foot and I'll use yours.
If I don't qualify your votes, it's prolonged.
I think this court's been very accommodating to each other about those kind of things.
It's such a tear up. I think that we have a motion by Commissioner Wiley. You've got a second? That is to accept the sole bid from Warren Cat on the Smooth Drum Vibratory Soil Compressor at seventy-eight thousand, even U.S. money dollars. All in favor? Is there any further discussion on that item? Okay, item number nine, Consider Barring Restrictions.
What are you doing here right now? I'm glad I got green.
Frost is coming on.
Cold wind is sure going to drive things out, though if it don't get some rain. But I had a little trash barrel that went for me out late this weekend. As they get away, burn just the undergrowth into the green grass. Getting away a lot of smoke, a lot of smoke. Yeah, it's hot. Not much flame.
Really? I guess it's, still got a lot of ground. Maybe a decent problem to have, but there's going to be quite a bit of fuel out there that's very lost.
Is that who's growing through it?
I don't see any other items on here. Is there any other matter of business that we might need to mention?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, our next meeting will be Monday, the thirty-first. Yeah, Monday, the thirty-first, but eight-thirty.
We'll have vouchers.
Eight-thirty.
We'll have vouchers.
We'll have vouchers on there. Any other item we can have on there, but I expect that. Pretty specific to the official appointment, overtaking and paying vouchers. But we can't have anything else on there that the court makes you put on. We'll have that posted on Thursday, late Thursday afternoon. All in favor of journey?
You need a second?
Excuse me?
Who's second?
Rogers? Yeah, I did.
I'll get you some coffee.
Okay. Can you be go look at the road after we fly off? We took that stuff down on.
Appreciate it.
We just call this that silver button on the other side of that.
I see a silver one.
Yeah.
Oh, tall. Is that tall enough? Travis, are you tall enough to see? I don't see how to turn that off. I guess I'm not tall enough. I'm not tall enough. I don't know.
Not here. Okay, we're recording. We're recording, you see there.